Welcome everyone to the November 18 city council meeting. First up on our agenda tonight is a public hearing and ordinance one and two. And we're going to get an overview of it first.
Great, thank you. Tonight's public hearing is on a package of land use code amendments related to single family housing in the R1 low density residential zone. These proposed amendments would do three things. First, they would improve compatibility standards citywide for structures that are currently allowed, and these include secondary dwellings, dwellings on existing alley access lots, and accessory buildings. Second, they would allow for new alley access lots in limited areas, and this would include compatibility standards. And finally, they would provide for interim protection measures in the Amazon, Fairmount, and South University neighborhoods, which would prohibit certain dwelling types and uses and land divisions until more comprehensive planning of these areas can be completed. These land use code amendments were initiated as part of Envision Eugene and directly implement several Envision Eugene strategies under the Housing Affordability and the Neighborhood Livability pillars. The public engagement process for these amendments has spanned multiple years and is grounded in the goals and the recommendations of the Infill Compatibility Standards Project. There has been considerable community input on these topics to date from a broad cross-section of neighborhood leaders and advocates, developers, architects, designers, property owners, and other interested parties, and as you can see, that interest hasn't waned. Throughout the community conversations, we've heard concern about looming walls, privacy issues, buildings that were the height was incompatible. These amendments, the intent of them is to address those concerns while still allowing for some level of development. Last month, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the package of code amendments. Their recommendation included a number of refinements that have been incorporated into the draft ordinance before you. One of the more significant recommendations by the Planning Commission is a change to the interim protection measures. Those apply to the single-family neighborhoods near the university. The original proposal was to temporarily not allow a variety of dwelling types, including secondary dwellings. However, given the testimony and the proposal crafted by neighborhood leaders from affected neighborhoods, the Planning Commission voted in favor of allowing secondary dwellings in the university area as long as they comply with specific standards. That's provided as an attachment, not currently incorporated into the ordinance, but it's provided as an attachment for you as part of the meeting materials. The draft code wasn't complete in time for the ordinance. Tonight is your public hearing, obviously. Next steps include a work session on November 27th, that's next Wednesday, and that gives you another opportunity to ask questions and to have further discussions about these amendments, and action is scheduled for December 9th.
Thank you. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must have submitted a complete request to speak form to the information desk prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the podium. The red light indicates the end of the three minutes. We have 12 people signed up to speak. First up is Bill Aspergrin, and then Pamela Miller. Bill?
I'm Bill Aspergrin. I live in Eugene in Ward Three, Allen Zelenka's Ward. And I've submitted written testimony and some detailed suggestions in there, but tonight I'm just going to talk about two recommendations. First thing I want to mention is that it was brought up by Alyssa here. The Planning Commission has made some excellent changes to the interim protections. They now allow SDUs, and they also allow extra bedrooms, which can be added to existing homes if a deed restriction is executed, allowing only three unrelated people in the house. And my first recommendation really is that the city council should approve the interim protections as an emergency ordinance and make it effective immediately. We really need these protections. The next recommendation, which deals with the R1 code amendments, I do not approve the R1 code amendments at this time. Instead, send them back to the staff and Planning Commission for revisions. Now, why would I say this? The amendments as they're written right now still have some problems, and here's just a high-level list of them. There are no parking standards for SDUs. There are still potentially 12- and 14-foot walls within five feet of neighbors' property. This was one of the biggest things that came out of the Single Dwelling Committee, ICS Committee, looming walls. There's better ways to handle this, and I think that needs to change. Minimum lot sizes for SDUs and alley houses are not in compliance with the metro plan. That needs to be fixed. The impact of alley houses, SDU's, garages on alleys has not really been evaluated. Most of the R1 alleys are 12 to 14 feet wide and are gravel. There's a lot of questions exactly what can get in there and what the additional traffic will do to these. And then the adjustment criteria is way too vague. It talks about things like maintains a compatible relationship to adjacent properties, or maintains the scale of the neighborhood. These things are too subjective for adjustments and probably create loopholes. These are only high-level problems. There's a lot of detail things that need to be fixed. It's taken six years to arrive at the point that we're at right now. There are still some major problems. So, the R1 amendments decked with a tight deadline and instructions to involve the neighborhood leaders in the revision process. The livability of our neighborhoods is just too important to approve these changes as they're written right now. Thanks.
Pamela Miller is next, followed by Carolyn Jacobs.
My name is Pamela Miller. I've resided for 27 years in the Sooner neighborhood, which is in Ward Three in Eugene. There are three issues concerning the proposed R1 code amendments that I wish to address in my comments tonight. The first is the interim protection measures for neighborhoods surrounding the University of Oregon. We desperately need this. Our neighborhood has been waiting for years to undertake an area plan, which has been put on hold while the nearly interminable Envision Eugene process unfolds. The livability issues in campus area neighborhoods are unique. A one-size-fits-all code will not adequately address some aspects of those issues, nor should the balance of neighborhoods in the city expect to be held to code requirements which address our unique concerns. We need some protection in the meantime until an area plan can be completed. In response to speculation, I have heard that our gorilla agenda is to have the interim measures continue indefinitely. That is patently untrue. The sooner an area plan can be initiated and completed, the happier neighbors will be. The R1 code is not the only issue that urgently needs to be addressed. I would also urge that these measures be passed as an emergency ordinance, so they will be effective immediately, and so that the R1 amendments can stand or fall on their own merits rather than being tied to the interim protections. The second issue is alley access lots and dwellings. First, creation of new alley access lots should not be permitted until the impact of development on unimproved alleys is studied and understood, and code requirements can be created that adequately address these impacts. I feel that that has not happened to date in the R1 amendments as they stand. Secondly, structures on alley access lots will have essentially the same impacts as far as compatibility and livability is concerned, as will detached SDUs. Therefore, they should be subject to the same standards. I also mentioned that much of the city does not have alleys, and the majority of alleys, I believe, are in neighborhoods that are associated somewhat with the university and have some of these other concerns. So they, for the most part, I think alley issues are more special to our area than to the city in general as well. The third issue is adjustment review criteria for these amendments. I have submitted written testimony in greater detail concerning this, but briefly. The objectives of infill compatibility code standards can be summarized as follows. Preservation of privacy for adjoining property owners. Preservation of solar access. Preservation of open space and existing vegetation. Mitigation of potential for noise pollution and parking congestion in the neighborhood. And facilitating compatibility of new structures with historic architectural design of existing structures, to the extent that other priorities are substantially compromised. These objectives should be explicit in the code. The code should also state that any adjustment review shall ensure that the accomplishment of these priorities is preserved or even enhanced by the design proposal. Thank you.
Carolyn Jacobs is next, followed by Marcia Shankman.
Carolyn Jacobs, Ward Three. So if you've already stood in your backyard imagining walls up to 14 feet high and up to 40 feet long with windows looking over your deck or your yard, five feet from your property line, maybe a roof 24 feet high, then I apologize. You already understand what's at stake, so here's what to do. Adopt the interim protection measures, which now do allow for SDUs and the ability to add bedrooms beyond three to the primary residence as an independent ordinance effective immediately. That said, effective citywide R1 code amendments are critical to everyone, including those of us near the university, who may or may not see a promised planning process come to fruition. As they're written, however, these proposals do not adequately protect any of the low-density neighborhoods, and some significant modifications are necessary, I'd say. Number one, the standards for SDUs and alley access units should be identical. Any dwelling located in the rear of a primary residence will impact the livability of the adjacent properties. Minimizing those impacts, by the way, can best be accomplished with a slope setback approach for SDUs and alley access units. There's written testimony that clearly explains this concept. Do not, however, permit the creation of new alley access lots anywhere. No study has been done to understand what transforming alleys that were never intended to be single approaches to houses in the traditional grid neighborhoods might look like. Certainly looming walls, increased traffic, questionable safety conditions, insufficient parking, aging infrastructure, infrastructure, unmaintained surfaces, I could go on. They all predict negative impacts. So number three, whether now or in the future, I would highly, highly recommend that council oppose a reduction in alley access lots to 2250 square feet, half the current R1 minimum lot size. While most residents are willing to accommodate smart, limited infill, under no circumstances is it acceptable to allow undersized lots, which drive the density in neighborhoods above the maximum allowed levels for R1 zones of 14 units per net acre. So now, if you're the person who stood in your yard and cringed when you imagined looming walls nearby, and you're willing to write truly protective standards for neighborhoods like yours and mine, then I would urge you lastly to eliminate the proposed adjustment criteria, which are nothing more than a way around all the standards. Open to any interpretation of their extraordinarily vague terms, require that they be recrafted for limited situations.
Marcia Shankman is up next, followed by Sue Pritchard.
I'm Marcia Shankman, and I live at 893 East 20th, Ward Three. I am a longtime resident of the South University neighborhood and a member of the Sooner neighborhood Board. My family has lived in the same house on East 20th for over 28 years. In spite of the detrimental changes that have taken place in the neighborhood in the past eight years, it is still a great neighborhood to live in, and one that very much needs to be protected. I am speaking in support of the interim protection measures for those neighborhoods around the university, and I urge the city council to pass these measures immediately as an emergency ordinance. In order for the interim protection measures to become effective immediately, they should be separated from the R1 code amendments. The R1 code amendments, as written, include a number of problematic stipulations, which are not consistent with Eugene's metro plan, and which do not protect the livability of existing neighborhoods. Many issues were discussed in a letter to the Planning Commission, signed by 45 neighborhood leaders, including myself. These problems have yet to be addressed. I will mention just one, which has to do with lot size. In the R1 code amendments, allow secondary dwellings and units with alley access to exceed the 14 dwellings per acre limit allowed in the metro plan. By increasing the limit to 19 dwellings per acre, the R1 code amendments seriously undermine livability in low-density residential areas. In the city's Growth Management Policy Number Six, the stated goal is to increase the density of new housing development while maintaining the character and livability of individual neighborhoods. In order to conform to the city's own policy and to truly reflect the vision expressed in Envision Eugene, I urge the city council to do the following. Separate the interim protection measures from the R1 code amendments, so that they can be passed immediately as an emergency ordinance, and send the R1 code amendments back to staff and the Planning Commission, so that the amendments can be rewritten in a way that will truly protect our neighborhoods from the negative effects of increased density. Thank you.
Sue Pritchard is next, followed by Nancy Record.
Good evening. I'm Sue Pritchard. I live at 2671 Emerald Street in Allen Zelenka's Ward. It's been nearly six years since this process began, and although that's a very long time, I think we should do everything we can to make them as effective as possible. I attended most of the Planning Commission work sessions on this topic. I really appreciated their thoughtful consideration, and I support their recommendations, but there are few things that could still be improved. I agree with others here tonight that the interim protection measures should be a separate ordinance from the R1 code amendments, so that each can stand on its own. The modified interim protection measures should be implemented immediately, with one exception, and that exception is duplexes. It escaped my attention initially, that duplexes are prohibited in the interim protection measures. Duplexes on corner lots are an institution in Eugene, and historically have provided an attractive, affordable type of housing for certain populations. My neighborhood has significant number of duplexes. I do not believe that they contribute to the negative impacts that we see from other kinds of housing, so I suggest that the prohibition of duplexes be removed from the measures, but that the bedroom count be limited to three bedrooms. After listening to the Planning Commission debate the topic, I became increasingly concerned about alley access lots. And while I support the concept, I believe it's a complicated issue, and I'm not sure that we've done enough work to ensure that they're done effectively. So I would like to see more conversation on that topic before they are considered approved. And then I have two other comments to make. One is, our code allows five unrelated people to live in a dwelling, so if you have a primary residence and a secondary dwelling unit, you could end up with as many as 10 unrelated people on one lot. Portland's code says a very different thing. It says you can only have as many people on one lot as you can have in one dwelling. So if they have a dwelling and a primary dwelling and a secondary dwelling unit, it's still capped at five people. The difference between five people and 10 people on a single lot in an R1 neighborhood is huge. This is what we refer to as hidden density, and this is why the interim protection measures are so important, and why we need area planning for those neighborhoods that are so heavily impacted by the university. I would actually like to see an incentive program to create the kind of housing that we want in these neighborhoods, rather than to penalize for having the wrong things. And finally, regarding enforcement, while the draft amendments have provisions that would improve the ability to enforce the code, there are some loopholes, and suggestions have been made to more effectively introduce solutions to occupancy violations, and I think these suggestions should be refined and implemented into the code. Thank you.
Nancy Record is next, followed by Tim Schinnaburger.
My name is Nancy Record. I live at 1575 Fairmount, Ward Three. As a resident of the lower Fairmount neighborhood, several blocks from the university, I want to add my voice to those supporting interim protection measures and the protection of neighborhood livability. Too many people who have lived in our neighborhood for a long time have become disheartened by the lack of city enforcement for the city ordinances we already have in place, and discouraged by the discussions of increased secondary dwellings, infill, and alley access buildings. I know personally a number of people who've moved away due to the influx of student rentals, as well as private student apartment buildings. There are now hundreds of students who live in illegal secondary dwellings, as well as overoccupying what were once single-family homes. Here are some statistics taken from the university website today. In 1999, the U of O had an undergraduate enrollment of approximately 13,000. Today, that number has increased by more than 7,000. Because the university has built little dorm space in the ensuing 14 years, the majority of students have moved into privately-owned apartment buildings and what were once single-family homes. Only 2% of seniors, 4% of juniors, and 10% of sophomores live on campus. About 80% of freshmen live on campus. The majority of the 3,762 graduate students also live off-campus. I would invite each one of you to come and visit our neighborhood and view the large number of secondary dwellings, apartment buildings, as well as remodels that include garages and studios before you take a final vote on these issues. In 20 minutes, you could drive the alleyways of our neighborhood and see how we have already succeeded in achieving a great deal of infill, one of the goals of Envision Eugene. There's been criticism that Fairmount and other adjacent university neighborhoods need to learn to live with increased density. And we do love our neighborhood, and we do love living near the university. But within two blocks of our house, there have been over 600 bedrooms in three, five, and six-story private dorms added, with 450 more projected to be built soon across Franklin Boulevard. South University residents, I'm sure, would invite you to also drive along 19th Street and see the increase in apartment buildings. There are also innumerable houses that have changed from R1 family homes to student occupancy. So we feel we're doing our part in our neighborhood. We ask that the city do their part through aggressive, adequate enforcement of existing codes, while they also take a careful look at the impact of changes to ordinances affecting SDUs and alley access lots.
Tim Schinnaburger, followed by Bill Randall.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I formally request you hold the record open for a week from tonight's meeting for any additional public comment that will come in. I'm a resident of Ward Three over on Eggit Street, and as a former private sector planner and a five-year member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, I commend the Planning Commission, staff, members of the public for understanding the Eugene code and working through it, and I urge you all to have patience as you try to untangle it and work with all this.
Would you introduce yourself?
Should I introduce myself again?
Yeah, you need to do that, yeah.
Tim Schinnaburger.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Here are my main points. In spite of the proposed interim protection measures, the council will need to assume any code amendments you approve will apply to the university area neighborhoods for 17 years of the 20-year planning timeline. That's in spite of the proposed interim protection measures. Number two, the 2250 square foot minimum lot size for alley access lots sets a bad precedent and will disrupt things. It will be in violation of metro plan policy, A12 among others. Number three, the example graphics in your meeting materials for alley access lots are drawn 1.6 times larger than the minimum lot size allowed, and thus they are misleading. Number four, if the city wants to allow smaller lots for alley access lots, please provide a method for the neighborhoods to request that. Please do not impose it on existing neighborhoods. Number five, if a developer has a lot large enough under these proposals for an alley access lot to be split off, that could happen, and the developer could still have enough land for a SDU secondary dwelling unit. Please do not allow such double-dipping, and please, what's the word, please direct staff to reword the amendment to prevent such double-dipping. So I'm only going to speak about the alley access lots. The current minimum lot size in R1 areas would be cut in half by the alley access lot size 2250. That sets a bad precedent, and I think developers will use that to peck away at the established character of every established residential neighborhood in the city. If you want to get a picture of what this minimum lot size would look at at full build-out, unfortunately, you won't find it in your agenda packet.
Thank you. Bill Randall is next, followed by Libby Botero.
Good evening. I'm Bill Randall, and I live in Chris Pryor's Ward. And I'm here representing the Planning Commission. I'm currently Chair of the Planning Commission. And in your packets, you have Attachment D, which is a summary of our recommendations for the modifications. And I just wanted to come and tell you that those are an accurate representation of our recommendations, and that we also tried, as we made those recommendations, to list at the end of each one either what our vote was, or what the general consensus was, if there were some dissenting opinions, what those were, just so that you had a sense of what we deliberated on through this. Would also like to make ourselves available, if you do have questions, as you enter into your deliberations, to answer those and kind of give some background on what we looked at as we were deliberating through this process, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Libby Botero is next, followed by Mia Nelson.
Hi, my name is Libby Botero. I live in the Amazon neighborhood, Ward Three, and I'm commenting tonight on the proposed interim protective measures for the university area. I propose that the Amazon neighborhood be dropped from the proposed interim protective measures, and here's why. Last week, before our Amazon general meeting, we did an opinion survey of Amazon neighborhood residents, walking most of the neighborhood door-to-door, and we asked the following question of well over 200 people. Do you, as an Amazon resident, agree or disagree that Amazon neighborhood should be included in the university area proposed interim protective measures? The overall result of that opinion survey was that 20% did agree, and 80% did not agree to be included in the measures. I understand that some people living closer to U of O in the Fairmount and South University areas, for which those measures were originally designed, as well as the very northern part of Amazon along 24th and 25th, feel negatively impacted by increased density of student housing with recent increases in U of O enrollment. However, I think we need to see if the new medium density, student apartment housing being built around the perimeter of U of O accommodates the need for student housing, thereby putting less stress on those areas close to U of O. It's obvious from the survey results that most people in the Amazon neighborhood, where there are a lot of family homes and a very active campus-rich school with over 400 students, lots of kids in our neighborhood, just don't feel this way. Due to time, I've sent you an email comment for the record, detailing some of the reasons why people in our neighborhood gave for being opposed, but basically, most people express the opinion that they want to follow the same building codes as the rest of the city of Eugene, support the goals of Envision Eugene for neighborhood infill, and to protect open space and affordable housing, and they really don't want the additional restrictions that are imposed for our diverse Amazon neighborhood. They might be appropriate for Fairmount and South University, but not necessarily for our Amazon neighborhood. Therefore, I request that the city council take that majority opinion into account and drop Amazon from the proposed university area interim protective measures. I'm concerned that by allowing some neighborhoods to somewhat opt out of the Envision Eugene plan, that it will set a precedent that almost every neighborhood will say they have some special reason why they don't want infill, and I think we need it to protect the livability of all of us. Thank you.
Mia Nelson is next, followed by David Sonnixon.
Hi, Mia Nelson, with 1,000 Friends of Oregon, PO Box 51252 in Eugene. This proposal is supposed to do two things: increase Eugene's land efficiency while protecting neighborhood livability. I think it's a really good I think it's a really good start, but I also think that Eugene should aim a little higher in both of those areas. Staff expects this proposal to enable only six additional dwelling units a year. As you know, state law does require Eugene to maximize the efficiency of its land use prior to expanding UGB, and so does the Envision Eugene pillar on compact development. It has been hard for me to understand why, in Oregon's second-largest city with 50,000 single-family dwellings by the end of 2032, we can't get more than six additional secondary dwelling units in alley-access lots per year in the entire city. This is the only effort that Eugene has made to increase efficiency on R1 land. I want you to consider this. If these standards could be revised to allow the creation of just 30 units per year instead of six, a UGB expansion could be avoided entirely. That is less than one new dwelling per square mile per year. We are that close to avoiding a UGB expansion that would be expensive and unpopular, and that would undermine Eugene's sustainability goals, all while creating no real home-building capacity because the property won't be served with utilities for probably 15 years. Just think, 30 units a year, and Eugene could avoid that fate. But at the same time, despite the staff projection of only six units per year, there's strong opposition even to this modest proposal. And most of the changes requested by the previous speakers tonight would reduce the capacity even more, maybe to the point where you should just abandon the proposal entirely because it will be so ineffective. I'm fascinated, how is it possible that a proposal this effective could even caus- ineffective could cause concern? And my initial theory that was maybe that six units per year was just six units too many, and people were opposed to any increase in density. But after talking with one of the strongest opponents of this proposal, I realized that I was wrong about that. This person told me he believed with a different proposal it would be possible to produce considerably more than six units a year and mitigate the neighborhood concerns. Now, I don't know if that optimistic prediction is correct or not, but I would really like to find out, and I hope that you do, too. Because if there's any chance of working with neighborhood leadership to produce something that not only provides more than six units a year of capacity, but also does a better job of protecting neighborhoods, let's not pass that chance by. So I would support the previous calls for return of this proposal for more work. But I would also ask that you request those people working on this to look for ways to increase the capacity beyond six units per year. Thanks.
David Sonnixon is next, followed by Andrea Fisher. Or Andrew Fisher.
David Sonnixon, I live on Skyline Boulevard. I'm the co-chair of the Fairmount Neighbors. And I'd like to thank the council for this setup here. I'm much more comfortable speaking at a podium at a lectern rather than getting up, walking, sitting down at a table, talking, and then getting up and walking away. I'd like to support the call for the interim protection measures to be implemented immediately. I think that we should get on with an area study with staff cooperation, with neighborhood associations, right away. That's essential. We don't want to drag this out. Without that, I think the interim protection measures won't work. And what we really want to avoid is the kind of stealth density that people have talked about, that I think the alley-access infill would generate. I don't think that's a good idea at all. Thanks a lot.
Last up is, it looks like Andrea Fisher, or Andrew. I think it's Andrew. Sorry about that.
Good evening, councilors and mayor. My name is Andrew Fisher. I live at 2450 Jackson in Councilor Brown's ward. I've served on the Friendly Area Neighbors Board since 2007. I'm the newly-elected Chair. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask that you might delay your action that's scheduled for December 9th on this subject. At the November 11th meeting of the FAN board, we discussed SDUs and alley-access at the request of a FAN couple who are property owners. A little background, there have been a lot of issues in FAN these days, from the South Willamette concept to the street improvement to the RFP on Civic, which I do hope the board will revisit because I think this is a legacy moment in our community's history. I served on the SDU and alley-access Subcommittee, and I do feel that the considerations in general for windows and balconies are thoughtfully derived at. Some of the more technical information was difficult for me to comprehend. But I do have respect and faith in the fellow citizens that served on the board. Unfortunately, our board has been so busy with Willamette Street and the uncertain future of Civic, we just haven't had time to formally address SDUs. And FAN is one of the neighborhoods that would most likely be impacted by this. I attended Amazon's general meeting last week, which Council Zelenka was also present at. And the sense that I walked away with is that, unfortunately, a lot of people just don't know what an alley-access lot is. I'm here tonight, again, to respectfully request that council might delay their action that's scheduled for December 9th. Our neighborhood general meeting is scheduled for January 16th. We have very vigorous conversations. We spent over two hours talking about Civic and South Willamette just last month, and we could have probably talked for another two hours. So if it works with your schedule, we respectfully ask that maybe this could be delayed so that we could discuss this further at a neighborhood level and get their feedback. Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank everyone for coming. And then ask if there's any comments or questions from the City Council. Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone for coming. You added very many sensible comments. I agree, I just don't think December 9th is, I don't believe that we'll have this thing hammered out properly by that time. And I also agree that, you know, the interim protections, now that we should pass ASAP, I believe. And I think it should be separated from the other R1 code amendments. And I also think that it should apply citywide. The areas around the university are most threatened by, you know, that will benefit immediately from these interim protections. But they're not the only areas in town that could be affected by not being included in this, you know, in the interim protections. You know, outer neighborhoods have expected or inappropriate development, or are being threatened by inappropriate development. And the type of developments that degrades neighborhood livability. So I'd like to see those applied citywide. And I agree that I think the alley-access lots components needs a lot more refinement, or maybe just be shelved entirely if we can't really hammer out a good policy there. And I agree, the adjustment criteria are way too vague, and it's got to really be nailed down or maybe eliminated entirely. And finally, I think working with neighborhood leaders and residents is the only way to go, you know, and get their input, meaningful input, and have a seat at the table. And then I think we'll end up with a really good, we'll end up with a really good code that way. Thanks.
Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions for staff and one for City Attorney. Councilor Brown just mentioned, and some other folks' testimony mentioned adjustment criteria. And my reading is, I'm wondering why, what's the value? What's the good reason to have wildly subjective words in there instead of maybe sideboards on it that say, you know, I mean, I understand adjustment criteria is so that we have the flexibility to meet the, you know, the comfortable nature of the neighborhood. But instead of just subjective words that could mean anything, why not say, you know, between here and here and under these conditions? What's the value of that?
Well, I, part of the reason for the adjustment review criteria is because obviously, you know, although the code is a one-size-fits-all, properties are not, development sites are not, development proposals are not. So not knowing what those sideboards would be, you know, is it a slope site and they need a different setback? Is it, you know, it depends on what the situation was. And so, we didn't feel comfortable putting those sideboards on. What we used was language partially from the city of Santa Clair, Santa Cruz in California, which is something that came up out of the infill compatibility standards, is having really good criteria. And so we modeled ours, a number of the criteria on their criteria. An adjustment review is actually a planning director decision. It goes, there's public notice, there's opportunity to comment, there's an appeal period. So it is meant to be somewhat discretionary and somewhat subjective. But we really felt that those criteria lead you to, you know, when somebody has to respond to those, that there are parameters. They're not numerical, but that there are parameters there.
So, in that case, you're leaving it up to the individual discretion of the person without any specific criteria at all, really? I mean, I guess my question is, what's the point of the criteria if an individual who's reviewing that can make adjustments without any limits?
We have to review it based on the criteria, and they should give us enough of, you know, those sideboards as they're written. I mean, honestly, there are some criteria in our code that, right now, that say is compatible with the adjacent building. And if you're downtown, there are some buildings that you don't want to be compatible with. And so what we've worked really hard is steering these criteria towards what it means to be compatible. So we've tried to learn from our, you know, past mistakes in our criteria.
Okay. I'm not an attorney, but I don't understand how we can have things that would be anywhere near ADA compliant with alley-access lots where the access is entirely in, without sidewalks, without any kind of, I mean, help me understand how that's possible.
I can't help you understand it tonight, but we can address that. I have done a little bit of research, and ADA actually normally addresses public accommodations.
Public, yeah.
So that's a big issue that I'd need to look into a little bit more.
If it's the sole access is not, then that alley a public accommodation?
That, I mean, I would have to look into that further and get you a memo on that.
Okay, all right. My last one is for our attorney. My understanding is that a formal rebuttal was filed to the staff's density findings on this. And we have an obligation to respond at some point soon?
When you adopt your findings, if, there are draft findings out there, right, Alyssa?
Were the draft findings, was there a formal rebuttal submitted to the draft findings?
Well, I don't know what you mean by formal rebuttal, but I think there was a comment that addressed the findings. And so if you, when you adopt your findings, you can address that in your decision.
I guess what I'm getting to is, do we, does the city or does the staff have an obligation to respond to that rebuttal?
The obligation is, if you're anticipating any type of appeal, you would want to have an explanation in your findings addressing that response or rebuttal. There's no legal obligation for you to do so.
Perhaps I'm not asking my question especially well, and I will perhaps at a later time. I'm asking if planning staff has an obligation to respond to a rebuttal submitted by the public that was already done?
I will tell you that the next set of findings that you will get with your packet for the November 27th hearing or public meeting will include some revised findings that specifically address some of the issues that were raised regarding Metro Plan compliance.
That's what I was getting to. Thank you very much. And I would like to move that we leave the record open for an additional week.
Second.
Moved to the second. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, yes. Okay, all right. And then opposition. Councilor Pryor.
Thank you. Just quickly, I appreciate everybody coming out and the thoughtfulness of the comments. It's very important to hear, I think, some folks that have been studying this very closely. This is and has always been what I jokingly refer to as the whack-a-mole issue, simply because of the natural conflict between density, urban growth boundary, and neighborhood livability. And they are in conflict, and figuring out the balance between those is a real challenge. And I'm intrigued by Mia's comment about the ability, if we can just look harder, perhaps we can find a way to accommodate or find that balance between those moles. Maybe we can, maybe we can make some progress there. I don't have an answer to it, but I'm intrigued with the idea that we don't have to sacrifice neighborhood livability in order to achieve some efficiencies in density or some increased density. I really want to try to figure out a way to get there. And so, I don't know if that really requires a delay or not, but I have a sense that we're moving quickly. And so my question would be if, what are the timelines that we're working towards? How critical are the decision points in terms of timelines here?
There's no mandate that you take action by a certain time. I mean, obviously, if it's in December, if it's not in December, it will get rolled into January. Be the next available time.
Okay. I'm not asking for delay just for the sake of delay or delay to, you know, go down a dry well. But if there's a possibility for us to achieve some additional efficiencies or some kinds of things that could work, I'm just intrigued with the notion that we could maybe work on it a little bit more to try to create more of a win-win situation and not just keep whacking the moles and they pop up somewhere else. Thank you.
The only comment I would make in addition to that is, this council has been very concerned that staff move on issues expeditiously.
Yeah, I understand.
So they would need for you to, as a body, decide that you want to take more time, and then they could do that. But unless you do that, they've got to keep moving down the road. So just think about that.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on to the next item, then. Thank you all very much. We have an action item, an ordinance amending the Eugene-Springfield Metropolitan Area General Plan text. City Manager. Move close to the microphone, I'm supposed to remind you.
So, the proposed amendments to Chapter 4 of the Metro Plan would revise how amendments to the Metro Plan are made and clarify which of the three jurisdictions, Eugene, Springfield, and Lane County, would participate in approving future amendments. The Metro Plan currently works under the assumption that Eugene and Springfield share an urban growth boundary and share a residential buildable land supply. But as you know, as a result of House Bill 3337, we are directed to establish our own separate urban growth boundaries and residential buildable lands inventories. So these amendments are geared at recognizing that change and this new and future reality of more localized planning and decision-making. These amendments do not affect the decision-making relationship with Lane County, and we will continue to work together on issues in between Eugene's city limits and the Metro Plan boundary with the county on those issues. On October 15th, the Planning Commission of Eugene, Planning Commissions of Eugene, Springfield, and Lane County held a public hearing at which no one provided testimony. The commissions deliberated and made recommendations for changes which are included as Attachment D in your packet. All of the Planning Commission's recommendations are incorporated into the ordinance before you with the exception of a recommendation regarding timelines for the processing of Metro Plan amendments. On November 4th, the joint elected officials of Eugene, Springfield, and Lane County held a work session and public hearing at which no one provided testimony. The timeline topic was addressed, and during the work session, it was agreed that a timeline would not be included in the ordinance, but code language, which we'll be developing at a later date, would address target timelines for processing amendments and a mechanism for providing updates if those timelines are not met. The proposal to eliminate regional impact from Chapter 4 generated some discussion at our work session on October 30th. And since that time, staff and the City Attorney's Office have carefully considered this proposal again. And we continue to believe that the regional impact provision is not needed. It has very limited applicability currently, both geographically and regarding the types of actions that it applies to. So it is essentially redundant provisions that are currently covered in our Regional Public Facility and Services Plan and Trans Plan. You want to talk a little bit more about that. In your packet, Attachment A, there is a map that shows jurisdictional boundaries. And if you look at that map, there's different colors. And on the Springfield side of I-5, that orange area, it's a very small area in between their urban growth boundary and their city limits. And that is the only area where Eugene could weigh in as regional impact. And even then, we could only weigh in if a Metro Plan amendment would have a significant impact on shared water, wastewater, stormwater, and transportation. impact on shared water, wastewater, stormwater, and transportation. Springfield could claim regional impact if you look at the map on the Eugene side of I-5 in both the orange and the green areas, and that's because our Metro Plan boundary is much larger. But again, Springfield could only claim that regional impact if it would affect shared water, wastewater, stormwater, and transportation. We already have an established process for addressing these infrastructure-based issues that is encompassed in the Regional Public Facility and Services Plan and Trans Plan. So the ordinance that is included in your packet is the same ordinance that is before both Springfield and Lane County, because all jurisdictions must adopt identical ordinances for the proposal to take effect, and the changes we made tonight would then require different action by both Lane County and Springfield. So with that, any questions?
Any questions? Motion on the table?
Certainly. I move to adapt, to adopt Council Bill 5101, amending the Eugene-Springfield Metropolitan Area General Plan text, Chapter 4, adapting a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Councilor Zelenka.
Yeah, I was the one who brought up the regional impact issue, I think several other people did as well, but that was under the misconception that that was probably the last vestige of regional planning that we did, but that is actually a fiction, because we don't really do regional planning, so, and so I got over it.
Conflict resolution part of this does give me some pause, though. I'm not sure what the rationale is for changing the existing policy, which is where current policy matters go to the MPC, which is a larger body, which has ample opportunity for discussion and has worked in the past. And this would change it to just the mayor of Eugene, Mayor Springfield, and the chair of the Lane County Board of Commissioners, and so it constrains the group that has that conversation. So I'm not sure what's the rationale for going from a larger group to a smaller group, and because I haven't perceived this as being an issue, and maybe this is a solution, looking for an issue that's not really there.
I think the primary motivation there was to allow more flexibility in the problem-solving process. Because the issue at hand may not involve all three jurisdictions, it may only involve two of the jurisdictions, the new proposal is written so that it would only include the mayor and the chair to be included in those, instead of sending that to the entire MPC. It also does not preclude those involved from bringing others into the conversation as needed. So we're just really looking for ways to provide more flexibility in how to get to a resolution.
And if we were to pull that out and vote against that, then we'd have to go back to each jurisdiction, and they'd have to approve the same thing for this to move forward.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks.
Betty, and then George, I mean, Councilor Taylor and then Councilor Brown.
Thank you, mayor. This may provide more flexibility, but it also provides more exclusivity. And I think it's a bad thing, actually, it's just two people, and I think we should change it, I think we should eliminate this part, because that is, it's less transparent, and it really depends on who just, it's not likely that people would know what's going on when it's two people. Whoever happens to be the mayor and whoever happens to be the chair of the county commission that year, I think that is too limited.
Councilor Brown.
I'm curious, I've been on council almost five years. How many times, a rough idea, how many times in the past five years has there been a conflict that had to go to the MPC for resolution? Can you, and if you could name what those conflicts may have been?
I don't think there have been any in the last five years.
Right, correct.
Someone's raising their hand over there. One.
Delta Sandy Gravel.
That was more than five years ago.
Yeah.
Delta Sandy Gravel. So if a conflict or, you know, a thing like that were to come up again, it would just be the mayor and the chair of the county commission that would decide it?
Yeah.
I'm not so sure, like, that idea.
I'm gonna, before I call on Councilor Clark, we were discussing that earlier today, and there seems to me there's one possibility, is that you build into it a, it could be our own rule, is that the mayor in such a situation does not take action on anything that the council hasn't given direction on.
Like we do with the MPC.
Yep. Because we already, that's our rule for MPC now.
Is that codified in the current document?
It's our agreement.
We could make that our agreement.
So that's the way we handle it now, and we've honored that for all these years. If you want to, I don't know, we'll take a suggestion for how you might want, might want to make that more part of the rules, but we're not putting it in this. It would be our own, it would be our own.
Process agreement.
Process rules. If you want to codify it in some way, I mean, that, you could figure that out.
I wouldn't suggest putting in this particular.
Right, that's what I was saying.
Code, right, but within your procedures or some other way, we could make that just a standard practice, which really gets that similar to what I think the MPC does. The MPC has other players that really don't have any party to the disagreement also, because you may have LTD and you have ODOT and others that.
I'd also say that nobody else, to my knowledge, has those rules. Those are our rules. So, anyway, think about that.
Well, if there's, yeah, if there's some way that that can be codified somehow, I'm not suggesting that we send it back to everybody and, you know, and then come back in six months and get that pounded out.
But what we could do is, we could come back with a couple of options that actually make it a part of your practice to do that.
That's what I was suggesting.
Councilor Clark.
I'm in favor of voting for this this evening, and I'm in favor of that particular process agreement being in place for us. I was going to take us in, down the direction of what happens if MPC disagrees, what's the secondary appeal if MPC doesn't resolve an issue, and is there such a thing in place for this?
Thursday, in pass, NRDC.
Yeah.
I don't know what the process is.
Okay. Well, I stand with my former remark, then.
All right. So are we ready to vote on this? Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you all.
With the understanding that the city mayor is going to bring back.
Yep, they've got that understanding.
Yeah, we will do that.
Yep, okay.